All this meeting to order and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now we'll do roll call. Counselor Broyles?
Here.
Counselor Vehil?
Here.
Counselor Hensley?
Here.
Counselor Grego?
Here.
All counselors present in a quorum has been declared with Counselor Daniel, Mayor Coleman, and Counselor Carson previously requesting to be excused. All right, we have our agenda, is there any adjustments or changes? Okay, if there's no discussion or changes, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented, excusing Counselors Daniel, Carson, and the mayor from the meeting.
I second motion.
So we'll do a roll call again.
Yes.
Counselor Vehil?
Aye.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to the next section and this is our citizen comments. This is where Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card that's outside the door. At this point, I have one card. If there's any others, go ahead and bring it to our staff, please. So the card I have is for Dan McCann. And just as a reminder, we keep these to three minutes. Welcome, Dan.
Hi. Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset Drive, Alamosa, Colorado. I can't stay very long, but there's just a couple of comments I'd like to make. First of all, I wish to congratulate the Public Works on the great job they've been doing with the roads and the infrastructure of the community. Now, this week, there's a special veterans event at the American Legion at 2:00 P.M. They're going to honor people from the Vietnam era. Doesn't mean you had to be in the war, but during a special time, 1975 on up. Charlie could probably give the specifics. And this year, something special happened to me. I got my 50-year membership pin for being a DAV. I'm always 72. Why? Because I was 78 and a half when I went in, and the things that happened to me, I was 22, and for 15 years, you, I was so screwed up. I mean, I had mental problems like you wouldn't believe. I know more about the human mind than Freud, but people, I'm a fighter. And they get everybody medicated. But I had two psychotic episodes working up high. I do believe in God, and I'm one lucky guy. There's 58,000 people we lost in Vietnam who aren't as lucky as me, they'd love to have gone through what I've been through. Anyway, try to be there if you're part of Vietnam era. And Charlie's a veteran, Marine Corps, Semper Fi, Charlie. And that's just about all I have to say. Thank you very much, you take care now. And by the way, I'm going to a religious situation. I am one believer in God. You take care now.
Dan, thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you very much for your service. Alrighty, if there's no other citizen comments, we'll move on to ceremonial items. And the first thing we have on our agenda is Joe Vehil Day. And I'm going to go ahead and have Counselor Vehil go ahead and read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Hensley. I'm honored to read this proclamation. If Coach Martin and Coach Mortensen please come to the podium while I read this proclamation. Joe Vehil Day, July 28, 2018. Whereas Adam State University and the city of Alamosa risk to recognize Coach Joe Vehil for his outstanding contributions to the university and the Alamosa community. And whereas Coach Vehil's efforts to bring the first-ever U.S. Olympic Marathon trials to Alamosa and Adam State on August 18, 1968, put Alamosa and Adam State on the world stage. And whereas on Saturday, July 28, 2018, Adam State is staging Alamosa's 8K Run with the Legends, featuring distance running greats of the past. And on Saturday night, July 28, Adam State will host the 50th reunion banquet to commemorate 1968 and Alamosa hosting the Olympic Trials. And whereas Coach Vehil and current ASU track and field coach Damon Martin collectively have coached Adam State to an astounding 54 national championships over the past 50 years. Now therefore, we, the Alamosa City Council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, July 28, as Coach Joe Vehil Day in the city of Alamosa, Colorado. Further, I encourage, we encourage, all citizens of the city of Alamosa to support the celebration and corresponding activities given under this hand and the seal of the city of Alamosa on this 18th day of July, 2018.
Would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, just a couple. We're really excited about this event, and I know that for most people, this proclamation, Coach Vehil doesn't know about this, and so it's going to be a big surprise for him. We're really excited because of what he's meant to this town, this San Luis Valley and Adam State, so. And just a little report about the event. It's going great. I think we've sold over 275 tickets to the banquet. The race should have 150 to 200 people in it, and so that's going really well, and it's going to be a great success that way. Some of the dignitaries coming back, we probably have over 20 so far. Two of them are Olympic gold medalists, one world record holder, one American record holder, and they're all in their 70s and 80s. And so it's going to be quite entertaining to see some of those old legends come back to Alamosa and celebrate with us. So, thank you for making it Joe Vehil Day, and we look forward to a great, successful event. I also want to mention that we met with the city police this week, and they're pitching in and helping, and we're really excited about that partnership. So, thank you for all your support.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any comments?
I'll start. I want to thank Coach Martin, Coach Mortensen, for taking that baton and continuing to do what Joe Vehil started. You know, it takes a team, you know? I know Coach Martin has done, but it takes a team and it takes a college to continue to support, and a community to continue to support. So, like I say, it takes a team to make this continue to happen, and I want to thank you both for taking that baton, so to speak, and moving forward with it.
Counselor Vehil?
Thank you. Well, I'd like to echo what Mr. Grego said. Thank you for all you do. I think we take all the greatness of our cross-country and track and field for granted. If you walk through Plackey Hall, the walls are aligned with championship after championship. 54 in 50 years is insane. And I said this a couple of years ago when we did the city, the sign out there, that I've heard you say this before, you might not always get the best kid out of high school or transferring in, but you get the kid that's the hardest worker. And I think that's a testament to our town and what we do here in the valley. We're hard workers, I just really appreciate that.
Counselor Broyles?
Just echo, thank you for all you're doing, and this is a great event, thank you.
And I'll just echo what all my colleagues said, and obviously, I'm very proud to be part of Adam State. And obviously, without a doubt, you know how much I appreciate all you do, and thank you very much. We'll go ahead and come down and present this and take a picture. to have the introduction of Moses Heredia. Thank you.
Evening, counsel. Tonight, I come before you to introduce our newest officer, Moses Heredia. He was hired by the Police Department on March 12, 2018. After completing his 14-week training period, he's been assigned as a single officer car. He comes to us from Center Police Department with several years' experience, but I'll let him introduce himself and tell a little bit more about him.
Good evening. Like Chief Oak said, Moses Heredia. First of all, I'd like to thank city of Alamosa and the Alamosa Police Department. I'm very grateful for this opportunity. I look forward to working here, I plan on staying here. I'm originally from Alamosa, born and raised. I'd like to thank my family, fellow officers, and I'm also a graduate, a graduate from Alamosa High School. That's about it. I've been, I graduated the academy here in Alamosa in 2012. Went to Center Police Department, worked there for about five and a half years, and then I came here. It was a long 14-week training period, but I got through it, and here I am. Look forward to seeing you guys out there and working with everyone. I'd like to give a special thanks to my fiancee for dealing with my attitude during these 14 weeks. All the officers in the department, they've all been supportive. Mr. Officer Ivan Garcia here, he noticed me when I was down a little bit, and he was one of the ones that would pick me up. Captain Estes, Captain Anderson, Chief Oak, thank you. That's about it.
Go ahead. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I want to welcome you, Moses, to a great, we have a great department, and the chief has put together a program that I think you're going to see how great it is. Another question, do you speak Spanish?
I do.
Papable?
Monday?
Papable?
Si.
Oh, great, great, that's good. That's an asset, because right now, not only in the city of Alamosa, but in the whole valley, we've got almost 60% Hispanics here. So, again, coming from Center, I can see, welcome to the family.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Anybody else? Counselor Broyles?
Yeah, Officer Heredia, welcome to Alamosa, it's great to have you on the police force. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you, I appreciate everything you do. I know you're going to be an added asset to our force. We're very proud of our Alamosa Police Department, and we're, thank you, and we're welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to Consent, excuse me, Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Counsel may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration if they want. Counselor Broyles?
I just have one question. Why is the general fund a negative 13 million? Cash, says cash, negative 13 million.
Judy, did you want to come up here?
So I think you need to use the mic, oh, maybe? Oh, this one? Yeah, I'll just use the microphone. It's actually, it looks like we're negative 13 million, but it's because we used a pool cash system, so all of the funds go into one account. And so, if you look down below that, there's a cash in bank for the general fund. And there's all those, there's like money at San Luis Valley Federal Re-Grand Savings, Oppenheimer Investments.
So does that add up to 13 million?
Those don't total to the 13 million, they're actually more than that. And then we have money that's in the cash in the enterprise fund. So it looks like a net of 5.2 million in regards to that listing, right? Right, right. So that, actually, that cash in bank is what is owed to the other funds.
So you have, you have most of your money with college trust, right?
Yes, because they're giving us the best interest rate right now. We try to keep a minimum of 250 in all of the local banks, and then we keep most of it in the Colorado Trust or C-Safe where we get better, a better rate of interest. And then every time we've had a CD come up, we've always approached the local banks to see if they can get close to matching that rate. And if they can, obviously, we would, and if not, we still try to keep the minimum, but beyond that, we go with the higher interest rate. Plus, according to the guy that helps me with investing, he doesn't really give advice, but his opinion was that local banks don't want to do more than 250,000, because anything more than that, they have to tie up their collateralized assets for. But the 250 were covered by FDIC. So, I just try to go with that, and we haven't had any pushback from the local banks on it so far.
Well, then in the enterprise fund, you have an $8 million cash balance, do you not invest those funds?
It's all, that's all, yeah, all that money is in Colorado Trust, it's all, it's all, that's, everybody's money is right there. It's just, then if you go back further, there's a due-to, due-from, and it's just the way the auditors like us to use the central cash system instead of having a separate account for each fund.
All right, thank you.
All right, Counselor Vehil?
Well, I was going to go ahead and make, there's no other questions, so I'll make the motion, we approve Consent Calendar A.
So I think Counselor Vehil does have a question, correct?
I do. Yes, city manager, could you please talk, or Eric, we were supposed to, we were supposed to sign the, well, the mayor was supposed to sign the management agreement with Cattail's Golf Board two weeks ago, or the previous meeting, and there was discussion about the liquor license?
So these are two different items. The item that was before you, the last meeting, was related specifically to the liquor license. This one is the management agreement. All we've done here is add the language since we're providing the accounting and payroll services. That's the only change and why it's on consent.
Thank you. So I second the motion that Mr. Grego presented.
All right, we can do a roll call. Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Vehil?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Heredia? Just to clarify, it was the lease, the last, the other item we discussed wasn't the liquor license, it was the lease, but we had to put it on hold until they figured out who was going to hold the liquor license.
And that's not, we haven't gotten that yet?
We didn't. They're doing a transfer, so they, so the mayor did sign that lease.
Okay. Thank you.
Alrighty. So I'm going to move on now to business brought forward by city staff, and the first thing we're looking at, it looks like it's under Public Works. And the first item is the first reading, ordinance number 25, 2018, annexation of 60 acres of SLV Regional Airport property.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This comes before you, on first reading, you found eligibility for this airport property at your last meeting, and that is, there was the 1-6 contiguity and the continuation of interests. This is a, the ordinance that would actually function to accomplish the annexation. And if you look at the plat that was attached to the materials, you can see where the 60 acres is. It's this rectangle that lies just south of Airport Road and just west of the runway. The county has actually approved the permits for construction of, I think, two buildings out there now. Those may or may not be completed by the time this annexation is completed, so there is a draft annexation agreement, which you are not considering tonight, it's just there for your background review. But that annexation agreement will deal with the fact that the county has already approved and initiated and started inspections for buildings that may not be completed at the time of annexation, and they will finish those off. So even if annexation happens, and this land comes under city jurisdiction, the buildings that have been started will be completed by the county. Once it's annexed, then the city will treat any kind of building application out there the same way it would any other building within city limits. So, that's the way it looks. There are other airport issues that we will bring before you in the future, but they are not before you now.
I have a question, Mayor Pro Tem, if I may. This, looking at this map, is that that section where they lease it out for grazing cattle, hunter? It's further?
No, that grazing, that cattle lease is much further south and east.
Much further south, okay.
Right, this is, this is right up bordering Airport Road. So this is Airport Road, it's harder to see on this map, but Airport Road forms the boundary of the city currently. And then it ducks south and picks up this portion of the runway, and also where the terminal is, and comes over here. So here's the city boundary currently. And this just adds this stuff in, right at the very northern part of the airport and the very southern part of the city boundary.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Vehil? Oh, okay. So if there's no other comments?
If there's, if there's no other comments, I'll make the motion, we pass on first reading, ordinance number 25, 2018, and set it for a public hearing on, what day is that?
August 1st.
August 1st, at 7 o'clock or soon thereafter.
2nd.
Roll call. Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Vehil?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Alrighty, we're going to move on now to second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 20, 2018, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Alamosa to clarify provisions related to wireless telecommunications facilities and to adjust limitations on multiple-use wireless communication facilities. We'll start with staff with an overview.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The purpose of this ordinance number 20, 2018, is to get out in front of potential development of what people have been referring to as 5G wireless communication or small cell towers. And the experience that more front-range cities have had has been that pursuant to a state law which grants wireless communication providers the ability to site small cell towers in public rights-of-way. Other communities have seen small cell towers come in and not have any kind of permit issue process or aesthetic regulation or other kind of regulation. And so this is to get out in front of that and put in some boundaries for how we will deal with small cell wireless development, when and if that comes to Alamosa. We hope that it does. In fact, what we're trying to do is foster 5G small cell development, because that densifies the wireless network and allows for greater speed and greater bandwidth of communication. So, in service of that, in development of this ordinance, I ran it by stakeholders that we could identify who would be interested in making sure that it would dovetail with how they are planning on bringing 5G in. Specifically, we had comments from AT&amp;T and from Verizon. I believe that, I also solicited comments from Viero and some others. But I believe that the ordinance as before you takes into account all of the comments from both AT&amp;T and Verizon. One thing that I do want to highlight for you is that in the communication, this was a moving, a moving process of many parts. Verizon's comments came in after the council packet had been sent out, and there were a few changes made in between when the council packet was first posted and the final version that you have here. Some of them got picked up also on a subsequent posting. Primarily, it's some language that Verizon suggested that I thought was very good, that gave our Public Works Director the ability to relax some of the standards for separation of towers, if it could be demonstrated that there was a need to have closer tower spacing than the 600-foot that we would otherwise require. And then the second is that Verizon indicated that they wanted to make sure that the language that we were using did not prohibit placing small cell towers in residential zones. And it does not, that was not the intention. So we clarified that language and additionally, put a limitation of 35 feet on such small cell towers. And that, you can have a small cell facility on a rooftop, but they generally need flat roofs. We have some flat roofs in Alamosa, but most residential areas are peaked roofs, and so what you would, what you find is either use of streetlights or power poles, which are first preference in this ordinance. But if that isn't, if those aren't located sufficiently, what the facilities would do would be to put up a single-purpose small cell pole, which would look like a streetlight pole essentially, it just wouldn't have the light on it. And that height is limited to 35 feet, as opposed to the 30 feet that I think was in the original draft to take care of Verizon's concerns. So that's where we sit.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and open this up, open up the public hearing, so if there's anybody who wants to talk about this, please come forward. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and so now I'm going to go ahead and move it to counsel for any discussion.
If there's no discussion, I move that we approve ordinance number 20-2018.
I'll second that.
If we could do a roll call. Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Vehil?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move to item C, and this is the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number 21, 2018, an ordinance amending Section 21-4-72A and 72B of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Alamosa to allow greater scope for placement of signs in certain traditional public property locations, and to change limitations on placement of signs on vacant land. I, again, am going to turn this over to staff for an overview.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. As indicated, this is the second reading, and this is a modification to the newly implemented Uniform Development Code to better align it with what the practice has been from a sign perspective within the city limits of Alamosa. It is allowing greater scope for the, these signs than what the restrictions exist in the UDC. You probably remember, we had the same thing that we dealt with residential signs and adding for the right-of-way during the primary season as well as the election season. When we took a look for these, this is related to commercial, both on, it's on vacant, and the issue was the number, the times that they could be out, and also the size. And so we had a few different things we needed to come at to try to solve it. In addition to the signs from, political signs, counsel was very clear in regards to the nonprofits, the fundraisers, some of those signs as well. And clearly, those are a little harder to allow, because those are more year-round. And when we get to sign ordinance, we very clearly cannot regulate based on speech. So we can't say a nonprofit can have a sign, but not a commercial sign type of thing. So, we had to get creative, which is why you have several different items to try to get at these from some different angles. The first one is that we are allowing for any number of temporary freestanding signs up to 32 square feet at any time on the following city-owned property with prior city approval, which have been used historically, which is the train pavilion, the Olympian Park, and Sunset Park. We felt that since the city has the authority to say yes or no, this is somewhat of a We felt that since the city has the authority to say yes or no, this is somewhat of a controlled environment compared to not having any regulations on a private property that is controlled by a private property owner. The other way we were trying to get at this issue is we removed the limitation on the number of signs, which would be currently one. We removed that limitation on vacant lots during the primary and the general election seasons. And those timeframes would match up with the timeframes we identified for the residential right-of-way as well. And then from a size perspective, we changed the size limitation from eight square feet to 32 square feet, because on some of those vacant lots that we've seen historical use, they're fairly large signs, and eight square feet probably would not be appropriate. We also cleaned up, as we were looking at that table, we realized the size limit for an agricultural zone is 16, so we also increased that up to 32 as well. Additionally, this last one is an attempt to try to address more of the fundraising, the nonprofit. So in addition to the train pavilion, Olympian Park, and Sunset Park, we also have where they can get 14 discretionary days for any person above and beyond the seasonal days for a sign on a vacant lot. And this would be issued by the permit through the Public Works Department, they would keep track of the number of days. So we were trying to come at this from some different directions, and this is the second hearing, or the second reading with a public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, before you open the hearing, I had a couple of comments that I'd like to make, by me. I want to thank the city manager and the city attorney for all the hard work they did on this, but there's a section in here that I disagree with. You know, I've had the opportunity to run over, over 10 elections myself, and how hard it is to even show up, to even put your hat in it for an election. So the one, the section that I have a problem with is Section 2C, where right now you have it, you're going to have those signs out there five months, correct? If I read that right? And what I'm, the problem I'm having is, you're taking, you're, you're having the person that's running out there go and take down their signs, and then come back and re-put them back up. And it's so hard, it's a hard deal when you first put those signs up there, you know, finding the areas. There's areas that, boy, you almost have to dig hard to even put a sign in it. And right now, what I'd like to see is, if we could change that, right now you have it May 1st to July 5th, that's, I guess, for the primary, and then September 1st to November 15th, where the regular election. What I'd like to see, and it'll still stay within five months, is maybe go from July to November and start, and start the sign, you could start putting the signs up in July. The deal of taking them down and putting them up is what's the problem, what I feel is, is a hardship on candidates out there, you know? And I, like I said, I, if we could just make that change there, where, you know, you would start in July, and usually, it's still five months, because in November, the first Tuesday of November, it'll, it'll, you know, people usually take their signs out the next day. So I'd like to see if we can maybe do, and I had an opportunity to visit with our city attorney, and he says, we can amend this if we want to, which also, we would probably have to amend ordinance number 15, the one we just passed, because I guess it pretty much says the same thing, so.
The only caution I would, I would offer is, I think the intent of the two different timeframes was the primary election season, and so your modification would prevent any value of putting signs from a primary. They'd miss the primary.
No, the primaries in July, right? When is it?
Middle of June.
Middle of June.
June 21st.
Well, maybe I'm, I'm saying June through November, not July. There's, I misspoke there, so.
Counselor Vehill?
I was just going to say, let's conduct the public hearing before we get into...
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, so if there's anybody who would like to say anything in regards to this. Okay, I think I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. So now I will bring it back to council for further discussion.
Okay, so, thank you. I had a couple of questions. Heather, in your explanation of this ordinance, you said somewhere in here that they increase, that they could have one sign in an empty lot?
Right now, currently in the code.
Okay, and that's going to change to what?
It would, it would, if it's, within the timeframes minus this, this current discussion, but if it was in the timeframes from the first approval, then it would be unlimited during those timeframes.
Okay, so I'm, I make my, I can clarify this in my, in my head, an empty lot during a primary season could have as many signs as it wants?
During the, in a commercial zone during those timeframes.
Okay. At the 32-square-feet?
Correct. We've widened or enlarged the...
Without any permits?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, all right, thank you.
So I'll make, do you want to make another comment? Yeah, so I, so one of the things I will say, I definitely understand what you're saying, and I know we've all run for election before, and it is kind of a pain to pick up our signs. At the same time, I kind of like having the ordinance, because it kind of cleans up, it's a nice debt not to have them out all summer long. And I will tell you from even a marketing perspective, taking them down and bringing them back up actually really helps the candidates, because when you start seeing them all the time, you actually, it's, you're not even noticing them anymore. The other thing that concerns me is if we keep it open for the full timeframe, is then the people who may not have won the primary, it doesn't, there's no real mechanism to make them take theirs down. And so we could be seeing all sorts of signs all through the summer. With this, at least, there's a mechanism to take it down and start over again. That's my thought on it.
And, oh, go ahead, David.
You know, I was going to say that, yeah, since the primary is like June 20th or June 23rd, if you put the sign up June 1, that may not be enough time for those primary people. And then I guess, going from June 1 to, or even May 15th to November 15th, that's six months. That seems like a little long to have signs. So, you know, I'm a little bit torn about how, you know, how to really manage that. Maybe I'll just make that comment.
And the only other additional information that I would add is, this isn't just political signs. So that's part of why we wrote this, but people can put commercial signs up during this timeframe as well. And so for your example, for the six-month example, there could be six months of commercial signs and a proliferation of those that we have no code for then, as well.
Counselor Griege?
There's not, nine times out of 10, there's not that many primary deals out there. So going from June to November, it's still the five months that you're asking for right now, you know? And a lot of people is, is ask, a lot of people have put up their signs in June instead of May 1st. So I'd like to, I'd like to see if we can change that, and if...
So what I actually, just in comment that I'm thinking now, is you never know what's going to happen going forward. And so I guess I have a concern too, because you could have all these businesses also start putting signs up, and then before you know it, we'd have signs everywhere. And I guess I, I kind of do like the limitation, I do think we have to start at May 1st if there's a primary. You can't really start it much later, they need that time. Because obviously, for those who are in the final election, obviously that's as important, but for those who are in the primary, that election is just important, because if they don't win the primary, they're not going any further. So, I don't know, just my thoughts. I do understand where you're coming from too, but I think the inconvenience of pulling them down, it's a pain, but it's not that bad usually, and usually you...
It is, it is, and I've heard from a lot of people out there that are, that are running, and they're saying, hey, that, in fact, right now, we have people pulling signs out of the county. They were, they had people take their signs down, they didn't even know they were in the county, and they were pumping and pulling the signs down. And then later on, they came back and apologized for it. So, you know, I, if there's no other further questions, I'll...
Wait a minute, I have a...
Go ahead, go ahead.
I have a, Eric, a question for you. Is there, is there a way that we could maybe come up with a set of, because I think the thing that, the only thing that we're hung up on here is the timeframe. Could you apply different timeframes to even-numbered years and odd-numbered years? Being that every even year, there's, there's potentially going to be a primary? Or in odd-numbered years, it's just city council elections, and those aren't primaried?
Yes, you certainly could. You could change that provision in Section 702B2C to read during the periods May 1 to July 15 in even-numbered years, and September 1 to November 15 in any year.
But why complicate the thing, right? We're just asking to quit taking the signs down, that's all. Why complicate the odd-years and even-years? Leave it the way, the thing is, is put together great, it's just the days of, the hassle of taking those up and down, is what it is, so.
Counselor Vehill, were you, Counselor Boyle? So, did you have something? Okay. Okay, so I, so personally, I don't like either in this, I like having not a lot of signs in our yards, personally, it's cleaner look. I don't know, I just, to see a lot of different signs around, I mean, when there's a purpose. So anyway, that's just my opinion of it. Counselor Vehill?
But to your comment just now, and Craig, if I'm wrong, Heather or Eric, in a private yard, a residence, they can have a sign if they want, anytime, correct?
Right. In the yard, yes. In the right-of-way, no.
So only, we're only talking about a couple lots in town, right? I'm thinking of the one at Catty Corner of Walgreens, I'm thinking of the place across the street from Domino's.
From a historical use, those are the ones from a commercial perspective that see the most, but clearly this applies to all the commercial properties. But those are the ones you listed are the ones that see the most usage.
Right, good.
But I, it also does include all of the ones that are in front of every single house that is on the other side of the sidewalk. It's every one of those signs as well.
The previous, so, because we've had two different ordinances. So the one that has already gone through council on first and second reading dealt with the right-of-way for residential. So if we change the timeframes, you would want to change the timeframes for that one as well. But to answer Counselor Vehill's question, if they don't put it in the right-of-way, then they're not triggering those restrictions. This one, there is nothing, they cannot be in right-of-way in commercial areas, and it was severely limiting the number and size for commercial, especially on the vacant side. So that's what this one is trying to get at. Does that help a little bit?
Counselor Griege?
Let, well, if there's, let me try to, a motion, and see if it passes or not.
Can I ask one question before you motion? Just, so I do want to clarify one thing. So your recommendation, or your thought process, is if we amend this one, we need to amend the one about all of the right-of-ways that are...
The residential right-of-way.
That, to me, I have a real problem with.
You're just amending, you're just amending the period.
I don't want, I personally do not want to do that for all of the, in front of everybody's house.
I agree. And just to be clear, you don't have to do that, but then you would have inconsistent timeframes, and it would be, I would submit, fairly confusing.
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we pass ordinance 21-2018 and amend Section, Section 2C to read from, during the period of June 1st through November 15th, maybe given calendar year. That's my motion, with that amendment.
I just have a question for you, and Mr. Boyle's alluded to it. In a primary year, the, the election is June 21st, June 22nd, is three weeks having signs up on June 1, like you said, is that enough time? If you really want the effect, I would say middle of May or May 1st.
Well, even the middle of, I'll go ahead and amend it to the middle of May, the 15th through November 15th.
So I want to discuss something really quick before we move it to a vote, so I just want to be sure that if this changes, we do still have the option to vote on the other one, we don't have to change both?
You do not have to change both, but staff's recommendation would be that you should because of the inconsistencies between the timeframes and the confusion it will create for people putting up signs.
Okay. So I think, so just to make, okay, just to make sure we understand, if we vote yes on the amended version, your recommendation is that we're going to come back at a later date to amend the other policy in regards to in front of everybody's house on...
But you can still vote no when we bring that forward before you. So you're not, you don't have to.
Right, okay, so that's what I'm saying, it's okay to have two different, two different rules.
Legally, yes, you can.
But you're not recommending that?
There's no way staff would recommend that.
That's, so your recommendation would be if this goes through, then we need to look at the other one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I believe you have a motion in a second, if you want to do a roll call vote.
So if we could do a roll call vote?
Counselor Boyle?
Yes.
Counselor Vehill?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, please?
Yes.
Counselor Griege?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Protem, please? Counselor Griege?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Protem, please? Counselor Vehill?
Okay, give me one second. Okay, so we're going to move on to Section D, and this is the first reading ordinance number 18-2018, River Trace 3 Annexation, approving the inclusion of the River Trace 3 property into the corporate boundary of the city. And it looks like you came up here, so you're going to be talking about this?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This property's been before you, since 1992, the original phase was annexed in 1992, the second phase in 1994. Part of this project, I'll draw attention to the annexation map, you'll see that a portion of the levy crosses the land that's just been transferred to Western Rivers. And the tail end of the levy is on a portion of the, the property that's up for consideration. The council has taken a previous action on the River Trace 3 property to find that it's eligible for annexation. But this levy issue came up when we were doing some, some research and some background, and we came across a, an unrecorded memorandum of understanding between the developer and the city that would, he was asking for fair market value for the land that the levy would sit on, and we have that credited towards his water rights purchase. We have since discussed this with the developer. He said that the agreement was never consummated, and that he's not seeking those water rights or credits towards water rights on this phase or future annexations. So we wanted to bring that to council's attention, so that we can memorialize that this hasn't been consummated with the city, and that there will be no future credits towards water rights for the purchase of the water needed for this phase of, of the annexation. And staff's recommendation on this is that you adopt the, the ordinance, and schedule this for second reading on August 1st.
Thank you very much. Any questions or discussion?
I move that we approve ordinance number 18-2018, approving the River Trace 3 annexation on first reading and set it for a public hearing on Wednesday, August 1st, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
I'll second the motion.
If we could get a roll vote? Oh, sorry, I apologize, hold on one sec. Counselor Griege?
What, he was asking about a, adopting something else before that, Dan? Or just, or just this ordinance?
Asking for what? Asking for what?
Weren't you saying that we have to adopt something else prior to the ordinance first reading? first reading? Or no? Maybe I missed or misread it then?
No.
Okay.
No worries. All right, so I guess we're ready for our roll now.
Counselor Boyle?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Griegego?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to section two, which is finance, and we're looking at 2A, which is the first reading ordinance number 23-2018, and ordinance amending section 2 dash 134 and 2 dash 182 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa, to raise the dollar amounts that triggers formal bidding procedures for purchasing materials and services. And I'll look to staff again for some guidance or overview.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This matter came up just in the course of reviewing some of our procedures for purchasing, and how they align with what our, what both our charter and our code say about how we should proceed with purchases. And the code that sets out, at what level does a formal sealed bid process have to occur, and at what level can informal processes occur, and at what level do you not need a bid at all, has been in place since 1992. And the dollar figures that trigger those various kinds of formal purchase process, our staff feels unworkably low. So currently, for any purchase over $15,000, staff has to go through a sealed bid process, with a few exceptions. There are exceptions for some things that don't require bidding, and there are exceptions for emergency purchases, that are certified as emergency purchases. There are exceptions for if there's only a sole source provider. But in general, $15,000 is the trigger for having to do a formal sealed bid process. And then there's a, below $15,000, there's an informal process where the ordinance directs that you should solicit quotes, but not necessarily sealed bid process. And another feature of the ordinance structure is that it's set up such, such that the finance director is the purchasing agent for every single department of the city, except the library board. And frankly, we haven't really been following that, because it's not practical to run all purchases for every department through the finance director. So with those issues as a background, what this ordinance does is raises that limit where you have to, above, any, any amount above that, you have to do competitive sealed bidding, raises that limit up to $40,000. It provides also then for staff still under $40,000 to do that informal bid solicitation process. Also makes clear that in that bid solicitation process, you need to be mindful of the local preference, and solicit from local vendors where, where possible, and then also apply the local preference adjustments to bids that come in, or quotes that come in with that. And then also allows department heads to make purchases, not requiring the finance director to do that, for any of those purchases that are under the sealed bid limit of $40,000. That's it?
Thank you, Eric. Any discussion?
Question. At what amount does Heather or Judy approve the bidding process to go forward?
Right, right now, it has to be Judy doing the bidding process for anything over $15,000. Under the, way it's newly set up, Judy would only get involved over $40,000.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Boyle?
How did the $40,000 come about? I've always felt like it should be like right, right in the area of $50,000.
Well, I'm sure you wouldn't get any pushback from staff if we were to raise it to 50. We, we had a meeting, actually, of the various staff personnel who do this kind of purchasing, and right around $35,000 seemed to be where typically, department heads or their designees, other, other people below the department head who were actually doing the purchasing, that was, $35,000 was kind of the level where that happened. But frankly, Counselor Boyle's, there was suggestion that it should be 50, and, and we were thinking that that was a little bit too free rein.
Well, I don't think so.
I, I think Judy had a little bit of concern about that. I don't know if you want to address that, Judy?
Counselor Boyle?
Does, is, does this include like a building or real estate, if you went to purchase real estate, or put up a building? So it's any, it's any purchase by the city? Whether it be equipment, computers, services?
It's, it's goods or services, yeah.
Goods or services, which includes?
Right. Real estate is, is a little bit different, because that's particular. So you really wouldn't go to, I mean, if you want a piece of, I suppose if you didn't care where the property was, you could put it out to bid, but usually for real estate, you're looking for a particular piece.
And sometimes dealing that with a ghost negotiator.
Well, I'm just thinking you're going to put a building or an improvement on a piece of property for $40,000 or $50,000. Would that include being, would that be included in a sealed bid?
If we're building something that would, that's above $50,000, then yes, it would be bid, or $40,000.
I actually have a, I have a quick question. So if, so when we set the line to be, so if we set the line to be $40,000, or whatever the amount is, if anybody felt like it might be to their advantage to go ahead and put something to bid that was under $40,000, so let's say a vehicle or something like that, and they thought they might get a little more competition, can they choose to do it if they wanted to?
Yes, and, and, and it's the sealed bid is what that requirement is, which there's a little more that goes into that. We're still going to do quotes and other types of things below that.
Perfect, thank you so much.
And this is the first reading anyways. So, I'll go ahead and make the motion we pass on first reading ordinance number 23-2018, set it for a public hearing at, on August the 1st, at 7:00 o'clock or sooner after.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Boyle?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Griegego?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to section B. This is a public hearing to receive input regarding the CDBG Public Facilities Grant used to help facilitate the infrastructure project completed for SLV Health, Medical Clinic, and Oncology Center Parking, and Blanca Street improvements. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Judy, did you want to come up and do a little bit of an overview? And John, if you want to come up as well, in case there's any questions, or if you want to add anything? We'll keep this short. This is part of a requirement for the Community Development Block Grant Program. We have to do a public hearing at the beginning of the project, and a public hearing at the end. There is no voting on anything from council, we just have to officially hold a public hearing.
Hello, council? Mayor Protem? We were, we partnered with SLV Regional, or SLV Health, for the, do the infrastructure, so we were the fiscal agent for the grant, and this is part of the CDBG closeout process, is that we have a public hearing, so that anybody that has questions or concerns about how the money was spent, or what we did, they can come and they can ask John, because he was the supervisor for the work. And, I don't know, it was a really good project, so, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Counselor Griegego, sorry.
Yes, I had a couple of questions. How did this work? You got grants to, a CDBG grant to, to put up a street? Or how did, how did this work, John?
There were a couple parts of this. One was the city asked us, when they knew, when we went to the city, particularly Pat, when he was here, to present what we were doing. We were asked to relocate the entrance of Blanca off of First Avenue. It was part of the city's planning that was going on there. And we, if you may recall, we had a lot of dirt parking lots, which is not common in hospitals today. And it was to pave and do that. And the other major initiative was to improve the landscaping along 160 between Arby's and the Old Griz. And we think it was all very successful. We're not quite through, but we're, we think a good improvement. And another fact I'd like to point out, we spent a little more than $2 million. The grant we got was $500,000, so it was very helpful. And the hospital truly appreciates the city helping us on this. And of the $2 million, over 95% it was with local contractors, so we, we tried to really honor that in this whole process.
So, so the grant, you're saying the grant was for $500,000 that you got from CDBG?
Yes.
And was there like matching funds? Well, I guess there was no matching funds with?
No.
No?
No.
Not from us, the hospital spent $2 million.
I know, I know, but that's to do the street and the parking lots?
The parking lots, uh...
And the Blanca Street.
Changing Blanca. We moved that to Pike, and that entrance, that particular one, and then the landscape improvement on 160.
Thank you, John, thank you.
Counselor V. Hill?
Yes, I had a question. Yeah, the, the improvements in there are awesome, the landscaping, the parking lots, all that stuff. Is the project completed or almost completed?
Almost, there's a tiny bit of landscaping left. If you notice, there's a berm along 160, one side of the berm still needs sod. And that's really about the only unleft piece.
How about the, I saw today some guys doing some landscaping on the parking lot next to First Street, outside the oncology center, is that part of the project as well?
It wasn't part of this partial grant-funded project. We, we had to separate it from a timing standpoint. That was part of the cancer center project we did.
Okay.
And we're wrapping that up, too.
Thank you, sir.
And I just, I want to make sure, because the CDBG grant did require matching funds, just not city matching funds. The hospital, so the city served as fiscal agent, but the hospital did the project management, grant management, as well as the matching funds, which far exceeded the requirement for matching funds for the, the project.
Thank you very much for what you did. The hospital looks awesome, and I know it's much more beneficial, it's helping our community, so thank you very much.
And our senior team, again, greatly appreciated the city's help on this grant, so.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Nope, is there? Oh, sorry, we do, you're right, I apologize. So let's go ahead, and we open up the public hearing. And I think I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, and I think now, since there's no vote, unless there's any more discussion, we'll move on to the next section.
Thank you, John.
Okay, now we're going to move on to section C, and this is Resolution Number 13-2018, amending ordinance 31-27 for the 2018 budget, also known as the Second Budget Amendment. Staff?
Hello. Since we make, when we do our budget, like we're working on it now, we make it as slim as we can, and as tight as we can. So occasionally, things come up throughout the year that we have to amend the budget. Some of them are good, like get grants and find money. Some of them not additional expenses. So I'll just quickly review the amendments that we're requesting for right now. I mean, the general fund revenue, the PD seized Camaro in, I think in a drug bust, right, chief? So, we put that up for auction, and it was sold for $10,370, so we received that revenue. This $500,000 is the DOLA budgeted grant for the SLV Health that we had in 2017, but it wasn't completed, so we won't receive the funds until 2018. And we did get the approval, so that we should have that money shortly. $79,000 is coming from the enterprise funds for some work that you approved for them to have done at the, at the water treatment plant for additional IT and hardware.
You skipped the $20,000 for the prepayment of SID.
Oh, no, I haven't gotten to that.
Oh, you haven't gotten, oh, sorry.
No, I'm just, I'm still in the general fund revenue. And then we received a prepayment for a couple of lots that were sold in the SID 14 area over on, I can't think of the street, I think it's around on Clark. Anyway, the lots were sold, and then, and so the, the property owner paid off the SID during this, as part of the sale. That's what, it's, he paid off the SID and the gas and electric for two lots. In the community rec, we received a grant from Colorado Health, Colorado Health Foundation as part of funding for the Montana Azul for $93,600, and we did receive that money already. We have a grant, we received a grant for, for $367,406 from GOCO for the Inspire. We'd already budgeted $50,000 of that, so that they could hire a outdoor rec specialist, so we had $50,000 in the budget, so I'm only ask, I'm only reporting the additional amount for that grant. And then, due to engineering and planning, we're going to defer, they're working, they're getting the engineering done, but the actual construction of the Montana Azul Park will not probably take place until 2019. And because this is a grant, that's a reimbursement grant, we have to defer also the revenue to 2019. So that's the 347-794 that you see as a decrease in community rec revenue. On Conservation Trust, when Andy did the annual report, there was a discrepancy in our records between what we had and what they had, and we went back and researched, and we could find, there was actually more of a discrepancy, and we were able to locate most of it, but there was the $6,059 that we couldn't find, and so, in order to keep our Conservation Trust fund in good order, we have to reimburse that fund from community rec for the $6,509. On the general fund expenditures, there was, we, there was an increase to the prosecutor's payroll, Jean Farish, for $26,600. The $40,000 for the JAG Stop Grant payment that you approved. And then, that total of $66,600 is coming from the fund balance. On the city manager's side, this isn't actually, it's just moving money. They have, they received a health, the health, the health partnership, is that the right word? Grant, and they had an intern for a while, and then she left, so there was still money available, so they decided to offer scholarships. So we just reclass the payroll money down into scholarships.
And per council policy, we as staff cannot move stuff from personnel down to operational, so that's why, even though the amounts are low, and it's within the same budget, that's why it has to come before you.
And the non-departmental, $18,331 is a prepayment of the SID. And the reason it's different than the one up above is because it doesn't include the gas and electric we don't, we didn't take a loan for, it's just repaying the city. And the 18-331 goes against our loan for that SID at Sandless Valley Federal Bank. The $500,000 is the SLV Health grant that was completed now in 2018. And IT, the $79,000 is for the work at the water treatment plant, but all of the, are pretty much all of the computer and IT hardware items go through the ITs, go through IT budgets, because they have, they have the inside track to get stuff at a good deal, basically. And they have the knowledge of what, what to buy and what will work. And then, the court, for whatever reason, we did not include last year in the budget the upgrade to N code 10, which Holly is very excited about, I think, but...
And this is, this is one item that has not been brought to you previously, so just add a little bit. We do have about $80,000 in the IT fund that they have had from savings, so that, that can more than, than cover this. And it's something that we've been waiting on N code for, so it's been hard to budget to know when the timing is. But I think these improvements help, not only with the electronic ticketing, fixing some bugs in regards to making it more seamless, but can also allow for more stuff on the website from a payment, and collections, and, and those types of things as well. So there's some, some significant enhancements for the municipal court.
And I believe it'll help with your reporting, like to the state and those kind of things too, right, Holly? Okay, so. And then the $10,370... And then, the $10,370, as it turns out, we get the money for the car, and then we have to give it to the DA. And then, they split it up, and then we'll get part of it back. But I'm not sure how much yet. Okay. And then, in the street department, that $34,300 is what it costs us to do that railroad crossing at Ladue. And per council, this is for the Water Smarts. I can't, I don't have the date on here, but I know that you approved this $15,000 brought forward from 2017 to be used on the Water Smarts projects for this year. And the enterprise fund expenditures, that $79,000 is again, the $79,000 that's going to the general fund to, for the water treatment plant. The $100,000 in the sewer department is for upgrades to the sewer system. It was a 124-inch line, and then now you have to do 215-inch lines, is that? Okay. So, and that. And then, the community rec, the 425-565 is the $6,059 that has to be paid to Conservation Trust. $8,500 for the Lee Field Kaboom Grant, Peyton's Playground, or Play Ball Park. $93,600 for Colorado Health Foundation, that was going to go to the Montana Azul. So, they can probably use that money for the engineering and some of the subcontract work or substructure work. I guess that they hopefully will be able to do this year. $230,827,000 of that Inspire grant goes to affiliated partners. And then, $86,579, we get to keep of that money. So, that's that. And then, there's the deferral of the Montana Azul Park until next year for the actual building.
And to just touch a little bit on First Street, and Mark will give an update at the end of the meeting as well. We are running into items that were not able to be predicted from a city perspective. Some of the utilities for other agencies, what we are running into is they are not at the locations they were, we were led to believe. And because of how much off some of them are, it is increasing the cost for the project. So, yes, it is a change order for the First Street project, but it's torn up, and we're having to get those utilities in there. And it's, we went off of what was provided to us on the location of the utilities for the design, and that's not where some of the utilities were. And so, Mark can provide more details at a later time. But, so he's prepared at the end, or if you want me to bring him up now?
I'll wait to read.
Okay. But, so the two items that council has not previously approved would be the change order for First Street and the Muni Court, or N code Municipal Court software. Everything else, I believe, has been processed by city council for these amendments.
Do anyone have any questions?
So, the $100,000 on First Street, that was not anticipated when you first did. What caused that overrun on the sewer?
Come, go ahead and come up.
Okay. There's, there's actually, it's several moving things that are totaling up to the $100,000. So, this will take a minute.
And can you lean a little closer to the mic or hold the mic up, or?
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
There's several moving things that are going on with First Street, and I don't have exact numbers for all of them. The first is, when we shortened it to Monterey, we neglected to catch that we were ending the 24-inch storm drain in an old brick and mortar manhole. And that manhole outfall was 12-inch. So, we were not only ending in an old manhole, we were constricting the flow. Not a good thing. So, we decided, we changed that to take it to Sierra and turn the 90-degree in a new manhole, so that that flow would not tear up an old manhole. So, that was $72,000. Then, when we got to Monterey with the storm drain, we started encountering extreme difficulty in getting underneath ASU's utility systems. And we hit a number of undocumented, unlocated power lines and some communication lines. And what things that were documented as far as power and communication were much, much lower in the earth, so that we couldn't get underneath them with a 24-inch storm drain line. So, we had to change the 24-inch line to 215-inch lines, parallel to each other, to try to get the same capacity through a smaller hole. That was approximately a $34,000 addition. I say approximately because we still haven't negotiated with Gardner the cost of buying back the material, the 24-inch pipe, and putting it in our yard for future projects. The positive change in all this, we went through with ASU facilities, and we were able to economize on some of the sidewalks scheduled for removal, especially in front of the library. And that will gain us back on the end approximately $40,000 is what I estimated at this time. So, that's a plus, not a minus. So, if you do all that math, it's more or less $100,000 increase in the project, mainly due to the many, many utilities we encountered and trying to keep those utilities functioning for the university and also install the needed facilities for the city.
Counselor Broyles.
Questions? Alright. Thank you.
Counselor V. Hill.
Thank you. So, Mark, Heather had mentioned that we thought there were some utilities on these, here, and they weren't there, and that. Could we hold some of those companies accountable for that and recoup some of that cost?
Short answer is, I would not recommend that.
Why?
Because primarily, they're ASU-owned utilities. The only one that doesn't fit in that category was, we did have a communication line that nobody claimed that was in a very bad place, that we ended up moving ourselves. Turns out, that communication line, we believe, we still don't know, it belongs to Verizon, and it provides the main feed to ASU's IT department. So, we did not cut it. We moved it out of our way and maintained the connection to ASU, as you would imagine we would do so. So, really trying to determine who owns it and who, primarily, it's ASU's utilities, with that one exception.
Thank you, Mark. And then, you mentioned the two parallel lines for the same flow to the old manhole? Did I get that right?
No. The old manhole was on down at Sierra.
Oh, it's here. Okay.
The two lines are from Monterey to Edgemont. So, we had to, we had planned on a 24-inch diameter, single-barrel storm drain line.
Correct.
We have changed to 215-inch. It's slightly less flow, but we feel that it will handle the design flow. And it's 215-inch lines, and we can snake underneath the interferences we ran into.
Okay. And construction of First Street is only going to Monterey, correct? This phase?
Correct. Correct. The work that we did between Monterey and Sierra will be patched, and that will take place in the new proposed CIP mode in Phase Four.
Okay. And then, I guess my final question is, do you anticipate, moving forward in the next phases of First Street, going east, all these run-ins with different utilities and XL and Verizon and all this stuff? Because I know, I know, I know over the last two summers, we've had a bunch of issues with that. Going forward, is that going to be, is that going to be a better situation?
I anticipate the proposed next year, Phase Three, which would be to the west, from Murphy to Victoria, that one is going to be exceedingly difficult. That one, we anticipate a lot more interference from Century Town. And we also anticipate considerable costs at XL. We have overhead power we have to move, and we have the same high-pressure gas mains that we have to deal with in that segment. Now, going to the west, which was your question, that, or excuse me, to east, towards the old grade school and on to State Street and eventually Cole Park, those should be easier, but a little bit of caution, that's the old part of town. We very well could find undocumented utilities in that section as well.
Thank you, Mark. Counselor Griege.
No, I didn't have any, any other questions. I'm ready to make a motion if we, yeah. There's, thank you both for the presentation. I'll make the motion. We pass Resolution Number 132018.
I'll second.
Rocco.
Counselor Royal.
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, please.
Yes.
Counselor Griege.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. Thank you very much, staff. Appreciate it. We're going to move on to Section 3A, and this is the first reading, ordinance Number 262018, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Alamosa School District to provide a school resource officer from the Alamosa Police Department to the Alamosa School District. Chief?
Evening, Council. So, this is the first reading for ordinance Number 262018, approving an IGA with the Alamosa, City of Alamosa and the Alamosa School District. Little history, since we have some new council, people in council. We've typically had an agreement with the Alamosa School District to provide a school resource officer to the school district working in all three schools, the elementary school, middle school, and high school. This position has been funded over the last several years after a grant expired. The city's portion is no more than $25,000, and the cost is split with the school district. The school resource officer is an employee of the City of Alamosa Police Department and remains under the direction of our department. They are mainly in the schools unless situations call for them to be pulled out of the schools, such as training, emergencies, and other such things.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
I had one, Chief. Do you rotate that position among your officers, or is it one set person that does that?
It is one person that is trained as a school resource officer that stays in the schools.
Good. Thank you.
So, last year, it was Officer Rocco, or, right?
Yes, it was Bruce Lucco who was working in the schools until his retirement.
So, who's it going to be now?
Dana Nowar has been working in the schools this year. This is for the upcoming school year.
Thank you, Chief.
Counselor Broyles.
No, just out of curiosity, because there's been in the news about school shootings. What is protocol in event somebody tries to come in and do an onsite school shooting?
So, the school district has obtained grants and made some improvements to the schools. Typically, it's called hardening the outside of the school, softening the inside of the school. So, it's making a warm environment for the children and staff to learn and work. The outside, it's made it harder for somebody just to enter the school. They've taken some security measures, access into schools and such, put cameras up. As far as protocol, it's a complex situation. Those are fluid situations, and how we respond is depending on what type of situation. So, as far as detailing one specific situation is hard to do.
Does this resource officer carry a firearm?
She is a certified peace officer.
Thank you.
So, I move to approve the ordinance on first reading and send it for a public hearing on August 1st, 2018, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
Second it.
Rocco.
Counselor Royal.
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, please.
Yes.
Counselor Griege.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on to Section B. First reading, ordinance Number 222018, an ordinance amending Section 1923-5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to remove a small portion of the area in which bicycles are prohibited on sidewalks and to add an area and two streets where adults may not ride bicycles on sidewalks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was quite the mouthful.
Sorry about that.
So, essentially, council had heard from a few residents concerns about individuals riding their bicycles on sidewalks. And it was something that prompted staff to take a look at what do we have in place and are there any changes that we would recommend to city council? One of the items that was brought up is an idea of, well, if there is a bike lane, let's just not allow them to be on the sidewalk. The concern that staff had with that idea is, there are a lot of bike lanes in the city, and it would be an enforcement issue. It's something that council could have definitely proposed and adopted, but we feared that you would get complaints from residents when we're not able to enforce that many sidewalks in the community. However, we did take a look at maybe what the two main arterials are from a pedestrian perspective and identified First Street and State Street as areas where we could prohibit adults on the sidewalk unless they're accompanying a minor. We still felt, though, that for comfort level of most people, having a youth on the sidewalk, even in these areas, would be appropriate. What you can see on the map is the light green Central Business District currently does not allow anybody on the sidewalks. And so, part of the other recommendation is to also extend that from an adult perspective to keep them off the sidewalks extending to West Avenue. And then, this little blue shaded area is currently prohibits everyone from being on the sidewalk. But given the traffic volumes there, we felt it was probably safer to allow a cyclist on the sidewalk than to not allow them. So, essentially, what this would do is not allow adults unless they're accompanying a minor on First Street and State Street on the sidewalks, and also extending that Central Business District concept for just adults to West Avenue.
So, I just want to thank staff for listening to some, to a few folks in town who have an issue with this and working with them and getting it. This is very fair. I like that it allows children on sidewalks. So, if there's no further discussion, I move.
Counselor Griege.
Are we, if this goes through and passes, are we going to go ahead and do some kind of education on this, as far as the, you know, getting the word out there and letting people know?
Yes, sir. We would do some education.
Okay. Good. Go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance Number 222018 on first reading and send it for a public hearing on August 1st at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
I'll second the motion.
Holly.
Counselor Royal.
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, please.
Yes.
Counselor Griege.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to Section D, which is our committee reports. Does anybody have a report? No. Counselor Broyles?
Well, I'm not, I guess it doesn't matter now. I enjoyed, I enjoyed the parade, the Fourth of July Parade, walking with the three counselors, mayor, Mayor Protem, myself, right?
It was a lot of fun, yes.
And we had a good time. So, and a lot of people appreciated it. We walked it into the parade, thanking people coming to the parade. And I heard a lot of good comments about, "Thank you for saying that," basically.
It was a good experience. I will go ahead and, I did have my CML Executive Board retreat this last weekend. It was in Fort Collins. It was a phenomenal experience. We learned a lot of things. It was awesome to see Fort Collins. I had not been there in a while, and what an incredible city and the things they have done there. It was really fantastic. The mayor and everybody showed us a really good time. It was really enjoyable. We definitely have some things that potentially could come on the ballot. There's a lot of petitions going out there, so we are going to have a unplanned meeting on August 20th. It will be a phone call meeting, so I won't be going anywhere. But we will have a phone call meeting, because that's after when all of the signatures are due. Excuse me. So, I will let everybody know what I find out in regards to what could potentially make the ballot. And I guess I've been chosen for my second year to be on the BAM Committee, which is the Budget Audit and Management.
the Budget Audit and Management Committee for CML.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, I guess if there's nothing else there, we'll move on, oh, sorry.
Sorry, takes a while. I just wanted to report, I did go to the senior citizens, appreciate, they appreciate us being there, and, you know, and they're doing well, and I signed up to senior citizen centers, I'm a member, they talked me into it.
Awesome, great job. All right, I will move on, if there is no other committee reports, I'll go ahead and move on to staff announcements. Staff, who's starting?
Mayor Protem, I will start that off, and just wanted to let you know that the golf course augmentation plan continues to creak forward slowly. When the engineer for one of the opposers reviewed our engineering and our proposed ruling, he pointed out that we were double counting some credit from the dry up of the pond and that we were about ten acre feet short in terms of the amount of dry up credit that we needed to apply to cover irrigation on the back nine. That means that we need to find an area on the ranch irrigated by the independent ditch that we can dry up to get ourselves an additional ten acre feet. In consultation with Alan Simpson, the ranch lessie, and Andy Rice, we have identified unit eleven B as the place to find that dry up. That's unit eleven B out of the designation as we have it in our ranch management plan. This is the area that is immediately east of the old dairy, here's the old dairy, right at the intersection of North River Road and whatever this thing is that becomes Stanley Road eventually. Kirk is running the numbers on that, we're gonna need to dry up somewhere between ten and twenty of those twenty-one acres to get the ten acre, ten acre feet of dry up credit that we need. That is not currently very well irrigated, so it was irrigated in the past, but currently it's what I would call wasteland, really. It might be irrigable at some time in the future with some work, but that's why Alan preferred that we take that dry up there.
I would just add, when the engineer raised these concerns, I think Kirk and Eric reviewed that and concur that we were, we were double counting it, so we're, this is something that our own people think that it was a mistake and we do need to do this as well.
I had a question for Eric, if I may.
Yes.
The seventy-five acres now that we just traded, were we watering at all in there? Could that be, could that have been used in this deal?
Yes, but we haven't traded it yet, and I don't know when we're going to trade it, and that seems to have stalled out a little bit, so Alan didn't want, Alan did not want to use that as dry up credit for precisely that reason, and that's just, I think it's too up in the air for us to use.
So if, so if it trades, then we can potentially use that seventy-five acres? If we do trade it, or?
Well, if we trade, so, I'm not sure what you're talking about, what, we're getting rid of seventy-five acres that's currently irrigated in the trade, so if we trade it, there is some credit there that if it gets dried up, we might be able to use.
Okay, that's the point I was trying to make.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But we don't wanna use that right now because that's more productive ground than this, than this is.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Veho?
Eric, can you please explain to me, 'cause I don't know, the process of drying up a piece of property, what do you do? Don't let the irrigation flow in there, or what do you do?
Yes, that's exactly right, you don't irrigate it. Sometimes if it's property that gets overflow drainage water from other irrigation, you actually have to actively put in interception ditches to keep it from using that water that might otherwise subflow across it. I don't think that'll be an issue for this parcel.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Eric before we move on? Mark, if you wanna come up and talk a little bit about the water tower? And then Dawn, you're on deck.
Okay, this is the craft water tower, and annually, we have a diver that enters the water towers and inspects and cleans the water towers. And just so you know, it's in a, the diver gets into a dry suit that is decontaminated before he enters our water supply, so it's all clean and sanitary the way we do this. Anyways, when he entered the craft tank, it was noted, and these pictures that you have, these photographs, are actually cell phone pictures of a video feed to a laptop that is in the dive shack as he's doing his inspections. So the video that we will eventually get of this situation will be much clearer than what you see before you. Anyways, what he noted that the interior coating that was completed in, I believe, two thousand and seventeen, is flaking, and that coating has a two-year warranty. We notified the contractor, which is McGuire Iron, of the warranty issue, and I was quite elated this morning to have an email from McGuire Iron acknowledging the warranty claim and asking scheduling for a crew to come in and repair, so they have acknowledged that there is a potential warranty issue. So that will be ongoing, and in the interim, we don't wanna muddy the water and get another contractor going on the exterior coating, so we will hold off moving that project forward until we get this repair complete. Potentially, we will take the craft tower out of service as early as the fifteenth of August, so this repair work can be done. And I guess that's it on the water tower.
I had a question, if I may. Do they understand what happened there, so this doesn't happen again? Is it just bad paint, or what was it that created this problem?
We don't know. And until we get into the tower and until McGuire Iron and our inspector gets into the tower and investigates what's going on, we won't know.
'Cause I, I don't...
It is probably, it is probably a poor application, or maybe a temperature issue when it was applied, is my guess, but that is only a guess. Until we actually examine that, that coating inside, we won't know what happened.
'Cause I don't want this to happen again and then we'll go out of that warranty and then we'll have to go back in there and...
Agreed.
...so, thank you.
Agreed.
Counsel Veho?
I had a question on First Street.
Okay.
Are we still online to get it done by the middle of August?
Uh, no. We are now looking at a potential, or an estimated completion date of the twenty-eighth of August, so the end of August. A couple of other things that I didn't mention during the financial, and I'll just morph into First Street update right now. We, today, we are done, are nearly complete. I mean, we've got like hours worth of work to be complete with the storm rain system, which is the most problematic issue that we face on First Street. We will move, quickly move into the phase of removing the unsuitable material to a depth of approximately three feet, put down a geotextile engineered material separation and start putting the engineered gravels back in to First Street. So we're gonna see an increase of truck traffic to and from First Street, and the street has to remain closed now until we're done. So we've moved into a new phase of the construction and hopefully, no more unknowns. We hopefully are done with the unknown situation.
And hopefully, it rains around Alamosa and not in Alamosa.
Right. And if we don't have the two-hundred-year storms that we had in last year's project period, we should be able to make the twenty-eighth deadline. Gardner Excavation is very hopeful on accelerating the next phase of the project over what has happened in the past for them, and very motivated to do so, so we hope to complete sooner than that, but that's our projection. One other thing that I wanted to add that I didn't say in the last go-around with First Street, another thing about the utilities that we encountered, we were, the ASU's staff was going on their best recollection of how those utilities were installed, so it wouldn't be really too fair to beat them up over a mistake on depth. So, it's kinda, it's just one of those things that we encounter occasionally in construction. Any other?
Counsel Broyles?
Going back to the water tank. Was the tank inspected when it was first coated?
It was actually...
By city staff, or?
It was actually inspected by a third-party inspector and city staff, so we have inspection reports from a third-party inspector, so an independent professional coating inspector, which is really a special field, was hired to inspect it. We would, we, I will certainly bring onboard a similar type inspector for this repair project, and we will definitely get to the bottom of what happened here. More than likely, we will have to take it right down to bare metal again and start over from step one and put a new coating system in, more than likely.
You have this comment here, it says, "The dark sediment may be blasting media that was not removed from the tank prior to application of the interior coating system."
Yes, and this is an appearance of a video going by quickly and a diver, you know, moving around, so it's our best guess, and also going off and looking at the materials sucked out in the cleaning process, it appears that some of the blasting media, so they go in with high-pressure blasting hoses, used to be ball bearings, but now it's what they call blast media, that takes off the old paint, and apparently, in the intersection of the floor and the wall of the tank and that area, they neglected to clean some of that blast media out and coated right on top of it, which is not good, so...
That's why I was asking.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. All right, next.
So, I'm gonna have Dawn come up, but we're by no means giving official numbers for the spring fire or anything like that, but since Dawn's crews were part of that response, we didn't, I was gonna let Dawn say a few words and then if you guys had any questions as well.
Yeah, just an update on that, all of the equipment and crew that we had committed to the fire were released last Friday, so we're slowly getting back to normal operation. During the first week of it, we did have a city engine and two county, an engine and a tanker committed to that fire, along with several people, and then it scaled back a little bit on the, both the trucks and the guys, but we did have continuous about seven guys over there until last Friday, so getting back to a normal operation. Along with that, obviously, the rain's helping quite a bit, so the federal people lifted their fire bans today, if you noticed that in the paper. The county's lifting their fire bans at eight o'clock on Friday morning, so until then, it's still a burn ban in place. As far as the city is concerned, that doesn't affect the city because of our burn ordinances in the city, but we will lift the fireworks ban also on Friday.
I had, I had a comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
First, thank you for going down and helping our neighbors down there.
You bet.
And if we had to put a dollar figure to that, to what we sent up there, not wanting to push the amount, could we put some kinda dollar figure to that?
And I haven't even started to run the numbers, Charlie. The first operational, the way our agreement is that we sign every year, that's what we call a cooperators agreement that we sign through the state, is we, our mutual aid assist is for the first operational period. Now, if it continued under Costia County control beyond that, then the mutual aid period would extend, but that fire went over to the state that Wednesday night, so our obligation to that at no cost is up to that first operational period, which ended somewhere around midnight for the rest of it, about three o'clock in the morning. From there on, we're actually on a resource order for the fire, so we will be getting reimbursed through the costs of the fire for the trucks and the personnel hours.
So we will be putting numbers to that because it's a reimbursement...
There will be, there will be numbers, you know, roughly each engine were, is about a hundred and thirty bucks an hour, guys are roughly twenty bucks an hour a person, so, I just haven't calculated it all, I just got the packet today with all the time sheets and everything on it that were coming.
And I'm not questioning at all our participation in trying to put any dollar figures, I guess just for our own personal, you know, use of...
For the cost, right.
The cost, what it cost us, you know, manpower, engines and stuff like that, you know?
Yeah, and I will be able to provide that to you, I just haven't had a chance to get it all calculated yet, so I will get that to you guys.
Thank you for helping our neighbors out.
You bet.
Counsel Veho?
Thank you. Chief, just a huge thank you to you and the group, the group of guys that went up there. I don't know if I read it in an email from you, Heather, or I was talking to somebody, but the day when that fire blew up, it was our, it was our guys who were up there first.
Yeah, it was Costia County and us were the only resources up there, other than what, you know, we had one helicopter and one seat plane and one heavy air tanker flying, but that was all that was up there until, and the two state engines, and that was there until the next morning, and then they got other resources from outlying communities within the valley the next morning, so.
Just, yeah.
And then additional resources that were ordered by the state started coming in on Friday and Saturday, but typically in these, the first forty-eight to seventy-two hours, they tell you as a local entity that you need to expect to deal with it on your own, so.
Thank you.
The cavalry, it takes them a few days to get organized and get to coming, so.
Thank you so much. Counsel Broyles?
I just wanna say thank you, you did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
That was a huge fire and a huge project, so.
Yeah, it was. Feel bad for the people that lost their homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before the chief comes up, I do wanna just review a few of our upcoming meetings. We do have a lot of stuff coming up before our next meeting. This one was mentioned in Citizen Comment. This Saturday, there is the Vietnam Veterans of the SLV Service Recognition at the AmeriGan Legion at two PM. July twenty-third, we are holding our first downtown design plan public input meeting, and that is at five-thirty here at council chambers, and so we are encouraging everyone, it doesn't just have to be residents, it can be visitors and everyone to come and provide some ideas of what they want to see the downtown look like and function and all of those types of things. The MIG is going to then take that information and present some designs for the next night, which is July twenty-fourth, which is gonna be an open house, and so people can come and view what some of these initial ideas are, provide some feedback, maybe vote on different ideas, those types of things, and so that is at five-thirty at Nestle Toll House. And then on Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, at four-thirty, we have the City Services Fair. We do have it at a new location this year, it will be at Boyd Park. On August first, we will have our first budget work session, and we look forward to that. August second is the employee barbecue, which will be out at the Cat Tails Golf Course, and then August third through fourth, so you guys are gonna get tired of us, we've got the council retreat out at Trinchera. Also that same weekend is the SLV Beat the Heat BBQ competition. And then finally, I wanna reiterate, August sixth, in case you're interested, let Holly know and she can get you registered, is the SLV Annual Economic Summit, which will be an ASU sub, and we've got a lot of great speakers coming in to talk about different economic development topics. I believe probably next week I'll be able to send out a formalized agenda, now that we've secured all the speakers and the time. And with that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Before the chief starts, I'm sorry, due to this fire out there, are we still going out there to Trinchera?
Yes, sir, as far as we know, we're double checking, but every indication is that they are okay.
Okay.
But we are double checking.
All right, thank you.
All right, chief, how are you?
Good. So, I wanna give you an update on my application that I've submitted for employment in Florida. I don't know if all of you know about it, briefly talked with Charlie earlier and he didn't seem to know much about it, but, so back on June thirteenth, I was made aware of an opportunity in Sarasota, Florida, working for the Sarasota County School Police Department.
for the Sarasota County School Police Department, the District Police Department. Three days after that, I decided that I was going to submit an application for that position. I did, and then I informed Heather immediately, as soon as I could. I submitted it on a Saturday evening, didn't know this, but Heather got immediate notification and, but that Monday morning, I did meet with her and talk to her about my decision and my reasoning why. And I'm, I'm trying to give you as much information as possible so you're aware of what I'm doing and why I'm doing it. I'll keep it brief, though. She's been supportive during the process, and this, this opportunity has progressed and developed, and at this point, I've received a conditional offer and I've accepted it. I've met all the conditions of the conditional offer except for one at this point in time. That, that process is to become state certified as a peace officer in Florida. I'm traveling to Florida next week to go through the most of that process. The last part of that will be a written exam, but once, if I'm successful in that, when I get back, I will provide a resignation. Right now, I'm not resigning, I just want you to be aware of where I'm going, and you're going to hear and see things in the next couple of days, so I wanted to make sure that you were aware of what's, what was going on. So like I said, Heather and I have talked, we've been in communication, she's been involved in the entire process. We've met and talked about, you know, what's next. We've met with Captain Anderson, and Heather has decided that she's going to have Captain Anderson act in, in a interim position during the hiring process of a new chief of police. And she's had Amy put together a job announcement, and I believe that will be posted tomorrow, if not soon afterward. During this interim position, Captain Anderson will be working closely, closely with me to make sure that there's a smooth transition from he to I, and then also to the new chief, whoever that might be. The process, we're estimating, will be about a three-month process. Just to give you a little history, I've, I've served with the city of Alamosa for 11 years. Four of those have been as the chief of police. I've served in the San Luis Valley for over 23 years. I need to note, and because this might be my only time to publicly acknowledge this, that it's been an honor to work with a professional organization, the department heads, and the leadership that you have is second to none. Heather is a great boss. The staff is great to work with, city council's supportive. So this was a hard decision for me to make. I'm both saddened and excited with this opportunity. I've lived away from my parents for 28 years, and that's what's really driving my decision. And over those 28 years, I've lost a lot of time with them, and it's time for me to be closer to them, which this position would be three hours from their house. And it's time for me to build memories with them as an adult I left when I was 20. So I see this as a great opportunity, but also saddens me because I love where I'm at. I didn't grow up here, although I've lived here longer than where I did grow up, and I do consider this home, and I'll miss the beautiful area of the country. So everyone that I've worked with over the years, community members, have been great. I consider everybody friends and family, and I'm going to miss everybody. So, if it happens, like I said, this isn't my resignation, but I did want to make those comments at this time to you. I'm, I'm sorry the other councilman, council people can't be here tonight. So I'll ask, answer any questions if you have any.
The only, if you mentioned this, I, I missed it, to just kind of give you an expectation of what to, what might be coming. After this week, if, if this is the last thing that's passed, which I think most of us who know the chief wouldn't expect this not to be passed, it's going to move fairly quickly. So it would be about mid-August, that could be potentially your last day, is that correct?
That's correct. Like I said, when I get back, I want to make sure I, I complete these phases. I don't want to mess up a good opportunity. I have here a good job, the people I work with and for. I will submit a two-week resignation, and just short of two weeks, August 9th would be my last day of employment, because I'm, I'm going to have a three-day drive to, to Florida, so.
So that is part of the reason we are moving ahead right now, to try to get just this extra week, but clearly if something happens or the chief happens to change his mind, then we would just withdraw the advertisements and, and close that position, because this is not a situation where we want the chief to be leaving. But it's something that, given that this is normally a three-month turnaround, we did want to take advantage of this extra week to get the advertisement out and to start that process.
Counsel Broyles?
No, I want to say thank you for what you've done. And it's an honorable reason to move back to where your parents was. Basically, I did the same thing, moved back here. So, yeah, it's been an honor, and I think you've done a great job in the police department for as long as I've been on council, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Counsel ViHill?
Thank you. Chief, you've set our, our police department up, you've taken it to the next level, and you've set it up for, for much success in the future. I can think of your, your, your lead on the lead program, and I'm really thankful for that. And we all know you're going to do good on that test, and, and good luck in Florida.
Thank you.
Counsel Griege?
I really didn't want to say thank you yet because it's, it's still not, it's not a done deal yet, and-
It's not a done deal, anything could happen, and I take pride in my work and, and, and what I do, and I think I will pass everything and meet the requirements, but anything could happen, and I know that. And that's why I'm hesitant to put in a resignation at this time.
You, you know how the way I feel, I've been a good friend, not only a good chief, but a good friend. And what you've done for this community, it's going to be hard to fill those shoes, so we hope we can get somebody equivalent to what, what we have right now.
You can find better.
No, no, I don't think so. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Well, I will say the selfish part of me is very upset and very mad. Obviously, I, like my colleagues up here, think the world of you. I think you've done a great job for, as a leadership with our police, what you've done for our city. Obviously, as a friend as well, I'm going to really miss you, miss the basketball games, things like that. But then the other side of me is very, very happy for you. I know that this wasn't an easy decision, and that this is where your heart's taking you, and so I also wish you the very best. And I know we'll stay in touch and things like that, so thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, on that note, is there any other comments? Alrighty. So we're going to move on to the next section, which is the Local Liquor License and Authority Action Consent Calendar B. And on this one, I believe all we do need to, unless there's any questions or comments, this is going to be on the Alamosa County Chamber of Commerce Beat the Heat BBQ Special Events Permit, which is August 3rd and 4th of 2018. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Consent Calendar B.
I'll second.
Awesome. Holly?
Counsel Broyles?
Yes.
Counsel ViHill?
Aye.
Mayor McEnroe?
Yes.
Counsel Griege?
Yes.
Delo, and Caringan.
All right, we'll move on to council comments. Does anybody have any comments?
Not a comment, just a question for Heather and, and Chief Chapman. I've, I've gotten some calls already about, with all the rain we've been getting, when are we going to do the fireworks show?
So we are looking at the different events that we have coming up. We obviously will need to have a discussion with SLV Federal, since they are the, the funders for that. But we are looking at the different events and, and which ones we think would be appropriate. We also are showing a little bit of patience as well, just because they're just now being lifted, and, and we want to make sure that there's not some turn, but we are taking a look at the events, is that correct, chief?
Perfect, thank you. Then a question for Heather. If you could, please, for our next city council meeting, maybe provide us an update on water usage and the voluntary restrictions that we put in place, if, if that's possible.
Not for the next one, I think in my response it would be August 15th-
That's fine.
-that we'll be able to provide. Some of the staff that would need to work on that are the same ones who are pulling together the budget stuff, so.
No problem, thank you.
Counsel Broyles?
We don't have a city council meeting on August 1st. That's just budget?
No, you do have a meeting on-
We have a city council meeting on-
Yes, so we'll have the work session from 6:00 to 7:00, and then at 7:00, you'll have the regular council meeting.
August 1st, okay.
Yes.
I guess I'd like to add is, so as Counsel Broyles said, 4th of July was awesome, and it was great to be in the parade, I really enjoyed it, I was very honored to do that. Also, I had a very busy day because also being part of Kiwanis and having the breakfast, so thanking everybody who came to the breakfast. Just prior to that, we had our Kaboom Park Project, so I would like to thank everybody who helped out on that. What a success and what a joy. I took my granddaughters there just the other day, and how proud they are it's the park that they built and things like that. And just having, it's just, it's such a great pride. So I guess I would take this time to announce that we have another Kaboom Build, and that is on August 11th. And I know I've already committed to be one of the leaders, so if anybody else would like to volunteer and join, we definitely need as many volunteers. I think those who worked on, the one on the 30th, really sees that every single person truly makes a difference. So I'm hoping that people realize that even though they think, oh, gosh, there's 100 people there, oh my gosh, 150, 200 is even that much more. So just that every single person truly does count, and I'm looking forward to being part of another project like that.
I have committed to volunteering, but I've made it clear I will not be a leader, because for those who don't know, you show up at 6:30 AM in the morning if you are a leader. So just thought I would clarify that.
If I may, I want to thank you, Liz, for organizing all the volunteers that week in that, that building, that was huge. I know there was a lot of work and getting all the people there and that, so thank you, Liz.
Well, thank you for also helping out with it, so appreciate it. There's a lot of people in here to help, so thank you all. Any other comments? All right, so we do have need for an executive session, so, let's see, so I guess if some emotions and then mentions what it is.
I move to, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-4A and 4E, as well as executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-4F for Personal Matters Evaluating the City Attorney.
I'll second that. One comment, did, did we vote on Consent Calendar B?
Yes.
Yes.
Did?
Counsel Broyles?
Yes.
Counsel ViHill?
Aye.
Mayor McEnroe?
Yes.
Counsel Griege?
Yes.
Delo, and Caringan.
Okay, so at this point, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. We'll go into executive session, we will, we'll come back out to adjourn the meeting, but there will be no new business.